We have teas prepared.
And a ride and then three houses down before you get down to Harvey's house. Yeah, that little stretch.
Old town tattoo club.
Yes.
Right.
Well, I know that's what it was referred to. Why so? I know Laura Love dates like a dozen of my things. It's how it works really.
Where are you from?
Uh, it used to be, uh, I'm two properties south of the old recording studio for Kaufman's place. Yeah, Madison. It was, I bought it from Roy Hutchinson in 2003, but I moved back to Taborcack as well. Dr. Hutchinson.
So from the recording studio, you're...
You go south, there's one property and you're right across the creek and I'm the first house on your way.
We weren't on that ground when I crossed the road.
Oh, you do.
That's a little kid's time.
I don't know if that's a little anymore, freshman and a sixth grader, but yeah.
Yeah.
My name takes that back.
Yeah. Gary's family and all, I know his house is up further. Gary's farm around this place or is this far connected to the problem? Um, Gary, if you can swim.
He does.
Yeah, Gary's worked for us being at the end of all of this.
Yeah.
Yeah, after March.
Shelter. Like I mean, this town, this is a red shelter.
Well, I don't see it. We come down most of time on 69.
Usually unless I'm going in over the guard or something.
And you notice the, uh, the dredge ditch that was in the north, about 69, like north or south of, uh, Gray House and Jason House. I don't know which place it bears. Okay. Um, like the blue building, black, uh, church. Keep going south.
I rarely go south of there. They turn onto the old black house and then they get over a mile and a half on that.
The reason I ask is because there's, um, um, we do that.
Oh, really?
And so, um, water blocking periphery.
Over.
Well, no, it's just, it's...
Okay.
It's quite a, um, it's a, uh...
Overly?
You can see where the water runs up this exit.
Is he good engineering?
Yeah, I'm serious. What's that?
Kind of interesting. Especially now coming. And I think they kind of have that out, so that's going to be a problem with, uh, my phone in.
Sure.
There's, you have to try to figure out how to navigate.
Yeah.
So, that's a...
My daughter is now fifteen and a freshman at St. Adam's. In the same class as Laura's daughter. And my son is a fifth grader, twelve, in the same class as her son. Um, every younger son. Laura's.
Well, well, we're the first. So let's get the first guy. I haven't even looked at that. Well, right now it's... But I would be happy to take away from my school. It's my year today. I just feel like, no, I care. And I've got, uh, some white hair to see. It's a way to walk in or to...
Well, I gotta be serious. Or I'm not saying I'm walking. Just, uh, it's in Russell.
If you get, if you ever notice ourselves, I'm not sure if you're gonna, but, uh, it also... Kind of walk back here. Actually, in that way, it's different for me. It's definitely, like, it's a good challenge. You know, pick the different places to be in spring. It's better than my daughter's, probably, uh, can't pop a little closer. Like, uh, the more way I make it, the better also get.
Eric, you say you farm the land across Madison, from here across 265. Madison, yeah, but. I remember when my kids were really young, whoever farmed that quarter of 265th, they saw my kids ride their bike along that road. And wait, it was down and gave the right combine.
It's funny.
Oh, really? My kids loved it. It was neat terrain. Cause they were probably, you know, five, three years old. Like, so. Yeah. If we might have happened with you, actually.
No, it wasn't you.
Okay.
I'm private. From the old black house.
Oh, I'm glad. Oh, sure. I see the kids with the dirt bikes all the time. I think you're bringing kids or something. Yeah. Look, oh, that is, you better watch out. They're flying. They're coming out of the alley. No, you have a beautiful life. That's great.
Yeah. Well, I saw a moving truck there last week, like an Alex truck, and I knew they were both like, uh, scientists and they were from our bill. Exactly. So I, I saw that truck and like, oh, yeah. I was gonna try to make an effort to be muted. I'll pick the way, you know, get past or other magazine, you know, the horses will go on you. Never got to.
Hi, Laura.
How are you doing? Good. How are you?
I saw the name by the way. Is that Laura Kelly I know?
Yeah.
German? Yeah, it's on.
Yeah, it's on.
Are there many people standing outside? No? Okay. Hey, Jamie. I was just gonna say, if we had too much overflow, maybe we go up to the courtroom.
Uh, I'm just gonna go to the higher area.
Higher area.
All right. Good evening. I hope everyone can hear me through the mask. Um, thank you for coming to the Webster County Planning and Zoning meeting. We need to do a couple of things real quick before we get started. We'll have our roll call. Margaret Nipple, I am here. John Anderson.
Here.
Daniel Dosker. Laura Kelly, here. Gary Nelson.
Here.
Tommy Smith. He is not here. And Bernadette Tucker. Is not here. Okay. Second, we need to have our review and approval of our minutes from our January 26th meeting. Does everyone have the opportunity to review those?
I'll make the motion that we accept. I'll adjourn. I'll second.
And the vote? Announce vote?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Okay, on to new business. First on the, on the list is welcoming our new planning and zoning commissioners, Tommy Smith and Laura Kelly. Unfortunately, Tommy couldn't be with us this evening, but we do have Laura here. And we just want to welcome you to planning and zoning and thank you for your service. Thank you. And now we want to do the second item, which is our public hearing. Kurt and Kevin Stumpf, amendment to the official zoning atlas, rezoning from A1 agricultural preservation to C1 general commercial zoning district for approximately more or less 24 acres of vacant land located at the northwest intersection of Poplar Avenue and US Highway 20. Jeff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, I do. Good evening, Madam Chair. Jeff Johnson, planning and zoning administrator for the county, presenting this request for a zoning atlas amendment to rezoning. Advertisement for this public hearing has been placed in the Fort Knox Messenger, the Dayton Leader, and the Gallery News. As per code, all property owners within 500 feet of the subject property were noticed by mail. The applicants, Kevin and Kurt Stumpf, are requesting a zoning change from A1 agricultural preservation to the C1 general commercial zoning district. As depicted on this map, the subject, approximately 24 acres of vacant land, is outlined in red and is located approximately one mile east of Colville at the northwest intersection of US Highway 20 and Poplar Avenue. The applicant is proposing to construct a 9,800 square foot convenience store with retail sales of food and gasoline approximately three to four acres. The applicant has submitted a site plan as per Webster County Code requirements and is binding upon the applicant for construction of said uses and improvements. And we'll get into that site plan later. So I just wanted to provide you some history. Uh, prior to Mr. Stumpf submitting this petition, he visited my office back in January and strongly considered at one time to submit a request to rezon the 40-acre parcel to the north, the 40-acre parcel to the east of that, and the 20-acre more or less parcel to the east of that or south of that, which is all east of Poplar Avenue. I had wondered at that time, he was not gonna get staff support on that, and he needed to focus more on the parcels that have direct frontage on Highway 20, which lend themselves more to commercial uses. And another reason why not to include those other parcels to the north and east is the fact that they provide a substantial buffer to the residences to the north. So as we get back to the map, to the north and east, those are crop lands that are owned by the applicant. To the west are county-owned lands that are passive in nature, consisting mainly of creek bottom and timberlands. This property is referred to as the Holiday Creek Wildlife Management Area. And to the south, across US Highway number 20, which is a four-lane divided major arterial that varies from 450 to 600 feet in width, another substantial buffer of residences to the south. Next slide. So this is the county's official zoning map. The subject property is outlined in black. As previously discussed, it's currently zoned A1 agricultural preservation. And as you can see, it's surrounded by similar A1 zoning to the north, south, and west. And east. So the next slide, Allison. I just wanted to share some photos of the site. This photograph is taken from the median of Highway 20 at the intersection of Poplar, looking north, with the closest single-family homestead on the north side of the highway being approximately 1,300 feet from the property. The next photograph here. This photograph is taken on the north side of US Highway 20 on Poplar Avenue, looking west, as you can see, the county-owned land, timberlands that are in the background. Next slide. Okay, this slide is a map excerpt from the Western County Comprehensive Plan. This is the county land management plan or CLUMP map that basically designates three types of tiers to manage future orderly growth and development while protecting the general health, safety, and welfare of the citizens while encouraging a strong economic base. The part, the subject property is located in what is called the urban reserve policy tier, which allows for an acceptable commercial land use. And that acceptable commercial land use would be consistent with the proposed C1 zoning district that they're requesting tonight. As per the Webster County Comprehensive Plan, the CLUMP establishes a long-range management policy that provides guidance for future development on the belief that development pressures and demands exist and that best approach is to acknowledge and accommodate these pressures through proper planning. In addition, intense development should be encouraged to be located within or adjacent to existing communities or appropriate areas within the county. And I will get into discussing why this is an appropriate area for commercial zoning and development and just not isolate the response zone. So the plan states, when making future land use and zoning decisions, this tier policy requires any types of these used listed, as shown here, relocated with the urban reserve policy, and that includes commercial. These tiers should allow for ample development opportunities while allowing for control of growth policy. So as we move on to the next slide, staff has reviewed this request and affirms with the criteria to evaluate a zoning change to general commercial as outlined in the comprehensive plan. The change in zoning is limited to the lands that have frontage adjacent to a major arterial, which is US Highway 20, and are located at intersection with full access to capture east and westbound vehicular trips as commercial uses are most sensitive to accessibility as their success depends on location and ease of potential customers that can travel to a location. Any future development should not have any negative impacts such as dust, noise, light, vibration, odor to adjacent properties if planned properly. So that's the key, if it's planned properly. As previously mentioned, the last to the north and east are applicant-owned. The property in the west is passive in nature. And there is county-owned land to the west, and there's a four-lane major arterial that provides substantial buffers again to mitigate these adverse impacts on the adjacent uses and properties. So it should be noted that US Highway 20 is owned and maintained by the Iowa Department of Transportation, and it currently averages 10,000 daily vehicular trips. This number has increased from 6,500 a decade ago. So we're starting to see more trips on this network. Poplar Avenue, which is the north-south road just east of the property, is a, is a maintained gravel road that is owned by the county. Prior to the issuance of any building permit for commercial use on this subject property, the owner-applicant will be required to submit a traffic impact report or study prepared by a licensed engineer to assess the adequacy of the existing and future transportation infrastructure. And this includes not only the onsite, the offsite impacts, but also the onsite impacts, the turn lanes, the queuing, traffic, traffic control devices, signage, et cetera, to accommodate the additional trips that will be generated by the proposed development. Next slide. So this is the site plan that was submitted by the applicant that will get finalized to the building permit review process. It should be noted as part of the building permit review, the applicant will be required to demonstrate that there are adequate public facilities available or plan to accommodate the development. So that's very important. So I've already touched on the requirement for transportation improvements in the traffic study. The applicant will need to provide a letter from both our fire EMS department or the county EMS department to make sure that there's adequate facilities onsite to fight a fire. There'll be a letter required from the county health department and Exenia Water to assure that there's adequate water and wastewater service provided. Currently, there is Exenia water on the south side of Highway 20. So all that needs to be worked out. If they decide not to hook up to Exenia, there will be a commercial septic and well that will have to be permitted by the health department. And also, there'll be, need to be a letter from Prairie Energy Cooperative, uh, which is the electrical provider to show that there's, uh, adequate electrical service provided. So the site plan before you this evening is somewhere between three to four acres of development. Uh, as previously mentioned, it's a 9,800 square foot building that will provide a convenience store with a restaurant, with outdoor dining. As you can see, there's two canopies for gasoline. The closest one to US Highway 20 is for gasoline to service the passenger vehicles. The one in the rear is, uh, for diesel cells, uh, to service trucks. There is a condition of approval that will require the applicant to modify this site plan to separate the two canopies by, in the form of a landscape buffer that will go east and west so that the truck traffic does not conflict with the passenger vehicle traffic. So that's a big problem right there that we'll need to correct. That will come out of a traffic statement or traffic study to make sure that's accomplished. As you can see, there's two points of ingress or egress along Poplar Avenue. One that will serve the passenger vehicle, the one that's closest to the south of the intersection. And the one that's furthest north, that'd be the one that would service the truck tractors for the diesel. As a public benefit, the applicant has been in contact with the county's conservation department to provide connectivity via trail system from the subject property to the county-owned lands to the west. And this also includes providing overflow parking, as shown on the site plan. It's located in the western limits of construction. A condition of approval requires the applicant to coordinate with the Western County Conservation Board and provide up to a maximum 20-foot wide easement for the construction of a multi-use path to connect this parking lot to the county-owned property to the west. And you can see that trail, uh, located at the south edge, southwest corner of the parking lot. And those details will have to get flushed off, but at times I'm going further west into the county-owned property. So going on to the next slide, Allison. So the request furthers the goals of the Capricious Plan, which encourages commercial development along major transportation corridors and provides an amenity that will attract the traveling public. So staff recommends the Planning and Zoning Commission or a recommendation and approval of this request to the board of supervisors subject to the following conditions. And I'll go through these. A lot of these are very important. So the development shall be constructed in conformity with the site plan submitted with this rezoning petition. If there's substantial modifications made, if there's a change in use or a 25% increase in size of the footprint of the building, the applicant needs to come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review as a revised site plan, which goes forward to the board of supervisors. The second commission, the second condition requires the applicant to be responsible for all federal, state, and local permits and licenses to operate set uses on the property. So not only will they have the county permits and licenses, but they'll also have to comply with any federal state, uh, requirements also. Previously discussed, number three is the requirement for a traffic impact report. I want to discuss this a little bit further. There's been a change here. They'll have to hire a licensed traffic engineer to prepare this report. Professional engineer to review the existing and proposed traffic. I took out the condition that the TIR, this traffic impact report shall be reviewed by the county's traffic consultant at the expense of the property owner slash applicant. Our county engineer will handle that. He'll be in touch with the Iowa Department of Transportation and most likely other consultants in the area to review that report. I wanted to be fair to the applicant on that. Uh, said traffic impact reports shall identify any required onsite and offsite improvements. As previously discussed, turn lanes, turning radiuses, queuing, traffic, traffic control devices. This includes all your striping, lighting, signage that's required. And obviously, these improvements shall be shown on the construction plans for building permit review. permit review. The next condition, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the landscape plan shall be prepared by an Iowa licensed landscape architect and submitted to county staff for review and approval. Next slide. And the condition after that, prior to the issuance of a building permit, they're required to issue, to provide a photometric plan or an exterior lighting plan to show that the foot candle readings of the property are .01, so that it's shedding light onto adjacent properties and all the exterior lighting is contained to that site so it doesn't become a nuisance. The third, the third condition on this slide, and we talked about this, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall modify the site plan to provide a landscape buffer between the convenience store and the diesel fuel pumps. The applicant shall provide county staff an internal auto-turn analysis of semi-truck traffic to assure there is sufficient space for maneuverable vehicles on the paved surfaces and to demonstrate there are no conflicts with facilities, the canopies, fuel pumps, underground fuel tank locations, loading, parking stalls, et cetera. Paved parking areas adjacent to the diesel fuel pumps areas shall be reduced to discourage the parking of semi-truck trailers to be parked for a significant time period. What we don't want to do is have this turned into a truck stop. That's where, that's where I'm coming from. I mean, you're gonna have trucks that are gonna come in there, and they're gonna come in there. They're gonna come in and they're fuel up and they walk in to leave. And we'll get into, and then when we get into the next condition, the applicant shall post signage and provide a physical barrier, this is fence landscaping, et cetera, adjacent to the north and west portions of the development, to put him in parking on impervious surfaces. Again, this is your semi-truck tractors and trailers that will want to park anywhere, everywhere, and want to try to use this as a truck stop. We want to discourage that. This is a convenience store with gas cells, and yes, they will be, part of those gas cells are diesel cells. The next condition, prior to occupying the convenience store and fuel pumps, Popular Road, which is the north-south road, shall be constructed and paved to county engineering standards with said public road accepted by the board of supervisors. Next one, prior to occupying the convenience store and fuel pumps, all landscaping shall be installed as depicted on the approved landscape plan, that will require to provide a landscape plan. The landscape architect shall provide a compliance letter to the county after two years, but no more than three years from the date of occupancy, certifying that all landscaping pondies and types are installed for the plan and are alive and healthy. If there's dead material, they have to replace it, so. The next condition, subject to Webster County Conservation Board review and approval, the owner-applicant shall provide up to a maximum 20-foot wide easement for the construction of a multi-use path to connect the parking lot to the county-owned property to the west. Said easement shall be reported to Webster County's office. So that's the public benefit that the applicant's giving back to the community. And the last condition, all exterior signage does require a Webster County sign from it. We'll want to look at that to make sure it's aesthetically pleasing. I'm sure they have those too. The last thing to note on this slide is that a comprehensive plan use, or comprehensive plan text amendment to change the future land use map will be required to provide consistency with that proposed C1 zoning district and the underlying future land use designation. Staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission board a recommendation of approval to board supervisors to amend the future land use map of the subject property from the current AP agricultural preservation to C commercial. So that'll be a required public hearing when this goes before the board supervisors. So that concludes, I do have a couple more things here before I conclude my presentation. So there are four, a total of four mail notices that went out to surrounding property owners within 500 feet of the subject property. As of date, staff has not received any written correspondence by emails or letters objecting to the request or in favor of the request.
Yeah, I'm not here for you.
Our staff, you can, you can submit that as public record. Our staff has had verbal conversations in person and over the phone with a few landowners in the area. So the applicant and his attorney, Ernest Kirsten, are in attendance this evening. I believe they have a presentation. So manager, I don't know if you want to go ahead and have them do their presentation now and then come back and address some questions for staff? And then open the public hearing, but my recommendation would be to hear what the applicant has to say next, but that's your call.
All right. Yeah, I agree with you. Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Kirsten, Mr. Sump, if you either want to do like to approach the podium, state your name and record and do this your presentation.
First of all, I'm Kevin Scow. I'm the developer, and thank you, Jeff. You and I have packed a lot of times together in the morning and a lot of phone calls too. And I want to thank the commission too for meeting tonight and everybody here for coming. It is, could be something pretty special. I hope it is, could be something special. And so I hope it's worth our time and effort to see if it is. So that's all I'm asking. Right now, my number one goal, there's not so much to build but convenience store. My number one goal started right now is I want to form a partnership with the county, with the state, and with the travelers. We all have to work on this together, and whatever's good for this person is gonna be good for that person. And whatever's gonna be bad for that's gonna be bad for them. So we all have to work together so everything is good between the state, county, and me and the travelers, and we have to nail it. So that's what I'm trying to do, is form that partnership. And this is my process tonight, is to form that partnership. So back to my, my travel center. I would really like to, I don't know if you guys have been to Holstein, but you know, it's not gonna be a cookie cutter, quick start. It's gonna be a highly attractive building. It's gonna, my wife Sheila's gonna design it, and she's, this is her art, she's good at this. It's gonna be like a mid-century for industrial modern building. I wonder if it explained more what the building looks like, but it's gonna be highly attractive with a lot of windows, because I got a special site here. Nobody on Four Lane 20 has this nature, if you looked at the map out there with the trees and everything, nobody has that. I got a special site here where I'm gonna capitalize on that. I'm gonna capitalize on the trees. I'm gonna capitalize on green space. I got a lot of room to work with here. I got, you know, my, my site plan, which Jeff said was three acres, but it is eight acres and says right out here. So I want to clarify that too, my site plan's eight acres. But I got this other room here too, that, you know, I can add to this. Like I want to do it like a closed dog park for the travelers. I want to give them something that nobody else has. So I, when they come across Illinois, this, oh, we're gonna stop in the middle of Iowa. Now hoping they're gonna stop, say, we're gonna stop in Webster County. So I really want to put a stamp on that map that puts us apart from everybody else. So that's my goal here. So my convenience store, like I said, I have a snack site. I would like to have a coffee shop in there too, and even like a loft, like a little meeting area up top where, you know, they want to come and have an electric charging station for the cars, if they want to do other stuff, walk around or have coffee, go do that. So I'm gonna offer this stuff. And then the food service, I would like to get something really clean, like a, my goal is Norbert Bread. That's what I really would like to get. I hope we're probably, Cordage isn't big enough, but if they look my traffic count and no competition around it, that I could attract somebody like Norbert Bread to go in there. So I want to keep it clean, neat, good, and if they want to get in, get out fast, I can offer that. So with my convenience store, I'm gonna offer the gas and diesel service, and then I'm gonna do the electric charging station, because I think I want to be ahead of the curve, but it's coming. And I'd like to, I don't want to be just the little, the level one, and with the level two, I'll do level two for sure, but I want to have level three that they do want to get in, they're gonna get in, they want to get charged up and get out pretty quick, they're gonna do it. It's gonna cost me more money for level three. I think in the long run, if you put it in now, I'm like, we're gonna get big dividends. So the next thing, my property is very advantageous versus other properties in Webster County or even in different counties, is I want to do a partnership with the Webster County Conservation Board. I'm gonna, they have this park right now that they're valuing maybe $1,000 an acre. It's just timber. There's only three diehard bow and arrow hunters who use it right now. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna give them, and they don't have to pay a dime to me. I'm gonna give them this permanent easement and I'll pay probably even to do the trail or I'll put the rock down where they need to get in there, so they got a good access to that park. But when they, they do that, I want them to do something, doesn't have to be much, just like a nature trail around there or like a, a trailhead that then they can promote. We got Camp Pinocchio just down the other side of Four Lane 20. And how many people even know about Camp Pinocchio? Especially the travelers down on Highway 20, but even in Webster County. So we could promote that, and then we got ATV park, about throw a softball and hit it. I mean, we could promote that too, and hopefully, you know, down the road, we could have a trail that connects all three parks. And then, you know, we can have, that it's gonna be just a, I don't know, it's gonna be a triumphant stop that they can use three parks and stop for a while, and then they can move on, whatever they want to do. So, and I'm opening up Matt Constance here yet, but he was gonna stand up and speak if he gets out, because he had a conservation board meeting. I was hoping he could tell, but him and I have been going back and forth on this, but... So at the end of this, then, what the benefit is, gonna be the county and the state's gonna be additional jobs and increased tax revenue. I talked the whole scene, and I didn't realize, I mean, this is gonna be 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and I was thinking maybe 15 to 20 employees full-time. They said 35 to 40, so we're gonna have 35 to 40 equivalent full-time employees, and we're gonna have sales tax for this, and sales tax to get 1% goes to the county, so they're gonna collect that. And then my property tax, my corn base right on my property tax is 5, 10, 50 bucks an acre. Now I'm gonna have three or four, $500,000 an acre, but that's all gonna go to the county, and that's gonna go back to our schools and make our schools better. So like I said, I think this is pretty special, and that's what we're trying to find out tonight, if we can get it done. I know we got, everybody's worried about the safety issue of it, so we're addressing that with the traffic impact study, and we'll get the blessing from the DOT, and that's what Jeff said, we gotta get it done first, but after we get that done, then the DOT's given it, then I can go ahead and get my building permit. So I'll be with the... Oh, then I got letters of support. I don't know, I handed out to the commission members, and I got one from a bank, one from Poet, I got one for Camper, Corn Belt Power. Corn Belt Power, they're really, really excited about this. And it is a co-op, and when you have a co-op for utilities, I mean, that's benefit all the members. And I got Lehigh Valley Telephone. I tell you, Lehigh Valley Telephone, you don't realize how much, you know, I prefer that my internet service, Bob's important with my electricity. My internet goes down, I'm about ready to shut the lights off. And Lehigh Valley Telephone, I've been with them for like 40 years. I mean, they, I swear to God, they got the best service in the state of Iowa. I mean, and then with the co-op, you get your, geez, seven years, you get 50% of your money back. You can't beat it, and the service, when they come out, but I'm getting a little carried away, but anyway, so I got a letter from my Lehigh Valley Telephone, and I got a letter from Poet, just showing that I am a good partner of people. So that's what this boils down to, is being a partnership. So I'm hoping these letters of support that I've got from other people that have been with for the last 40 years will carry on to you guys, to show that, you know, I am a good investment for the county, and I am a good investment for the state of Iowa, and I am a good investment to the travelers. Oh, and I got a late letter from State Senator Tim Crier, which he's been really, really good help to me too. All, there's been a lot of people. There's some, there's some good people at the DOT that's been really good with me. One of my DOT guys that's pretty high up and met me outside at five o'clock in the morning. Who meets, who meets anybody at five o'clock in the morning, let alone government employee? I told him I'd camp out there overnight, not missing, to do it, so I'm just saying. There's a lot of people that's really been helping me on this, and it is a big project. It's not something I can do by myself. I'm willing to put the time and effort in, and I feel like I got enough people that will help me get it through, put it together.
Thank you. Mr. Kirsten?
I'll use her mic for later.
Okay, all right, thank you. Jeff, I just want to make sure that we get all of these letters into public record. I wanted to start off with the two emails that I received from Lehigh Valley telephone stations and First State Bank, and I hope we need to remember, I want to send them to our public record for a minute. And the ones that Mr. Sump is representing from State Senator Tim Crier, and also from Prairie Energy Cooperative, a letter of support, and from Poet, filing, resigning, gallery.
So yeah, so those will be entered as public record, and I'm not, I'm not gonna read those out loud. Everything's public record, you can come in to my office, I'll provide those to you. I'll email those to you if anybody's interested in looking at those.
All right. Okay. Anyone, if no one else is, Mr. Kirsten, if you don't have any other comments that you want to make, I think more we should open it up for our public comments, and if you'd like to make a public comment, please come to the podium, and if you would state your name so that we can have that on record, the time of the signing sheet, and please give us your comments.
Absolutely. I'm Tracy Fair. I live, so, where this is Circle and Red there, I live just north of Dale, that's where I live at. I got a couple of issues with it. I've lived there for, I've lived that place for 20 years, I'm just down, so I've been coming off that Pop Rad for about 30 years, I lived before, the interstate, we did that. I had semis for 25 years, and I would come down the gravel road all night, so a lot of times you've got to come down that gravel road, and say I'm heading toward West City, so I'm gonna head east, cutting across there, you, you can't stop in, in the middle, because a semi wouldn't fit in there. So you've got to cut across, head east, which is, I think is very dangerous in doing that. Sometimes in the mornings when I left, I would actually even head east and go up to inner, the exit, and get off there, come back, and come back around, because that is an uphill coming across there. You got to remember, that's a 65 mile an hour lane or deal, and what 65 means 70. So everybody's coming up that hill at 70. So if it happened to be a foggy morning or whatever, it's, you're, you're cutting traffic. And then when I'm coming home, when I was becoming home, heading west, so I'm slowing down to zero, and people are coming behind you 65, 70, you know, they got, there are two people behind you. I, I just think that is a very dangerous intersection for running that kind of traffic through it. I, I never did hear like what they planned on doing for exits or interchanges or what, I don't know if they're changing the roads at all or any of that stuff. I didn't mention any of that stuff. So I, I always figured there'd be a convenience store somewhere along that 20 in these days, but I would think on the exits, either on the Cobalt Block Top or 169 would be way better, you know, just it slows traffic down, safety exit to get off and stuff like that. So the safety concern is really a big concern to me, because I, I come over there every, you know, me and my wife, and so we come in and out of that every day. I hate to say I don't want, I'm gonna say I don't want it, but that ain't gonna stop progress, you know, just because people don't want it. I'm looking at a lot of it because of the safety. And another concern I have is Kevin. I know Kevin, I've known him for years. He's talked about how beautiful this is gonna be, how he's beautifying, he's always worried about Webster County. They live right outside of State Park. I don't know if any of you guys went down that way? Our State Parks is one of the best in this county, or best in the state. The way that, if he wants to spend some money to help Webster County beautify and stuff, why don't he spend some money fixing that catalog, put this fence up, height it, whatever? It looks like shit, and everybody that goes into Dollar Park has to see that. Anybody that rides motorcycles or anything like that, I've talked to guys that do that, they're always scared coming out of that park. They, they can't go very fast because they drag mud, everything out on that, that black out. I mean, if he's really worried about that, let's start there. Let's beautify that, go into our state park, not worry about coming here and making money on the convenience store. That's another deal, I mean, that, that is a concern mine. There's a lot, I don't, that's, that's about what I have to say about it. It's just a safety factor, it just really concerns me. I never, did you guys have any plans of what's gonna go for exits or turn lanes or any of that stuff?
So, appreciate your comments, Tracy. So as previously discussed...
So, as previously discussed, they have to prepare the traffic impact report for study, and what will come out of that is what's gonna be required, or more gonna be required, transportation improvements to make sure that there are no traffic conflicts or impacts. I got, their job is to make everything safe, and however they do that, like with turn lanes, kid lanes...
Is there anybody with a DOT here tonight?
No, that's just probably the, the DOT. So we're, he's just in the initial stages of preparing that report, that's gotta be reviewed. What's gonna come out of that report are all the improvements that are needed to basically make that intersection safe. And, uh, it remains to be seen, but there are gonna have to be improvements on that, that intersection.
Because like, if you're, if you're heading from Fort Dodge, heading east on 20, there is a turn lane, there is a turn lane going out of Pop Rabbit, but when they, when they reached that, that, uh, 20, uh, it was a year ago, they did not make that very long, I mean, it's, you used to get a semi in there, maybe a car, but after that, there's not... If they had, if people really wanted to turn there, or somebody waiting to turn there, they would be sitting on the interstate waiting to get into that deal.
So this is the Holstein setting?
Well, this is, man, a Holstein site, don't they, don't they drop that down on a 55 mile an hour way through there?
They do, they do.
Will they drop?
Well, we don't know, that's all part of the study, so, you know, and that's, you know, this is...
And Holstein is that, that is their town, they, when they built that highway, they're doing Holstein, they considered the town being there, so they changed all that stuff because of the town. There's no town where they want the better convenience store, they haven't changed that, and they did that highway to one.
You can see the dedicated turn lane, uh, coming in from, from, heading west, there's a dedicated turn lane for eastbound traffic. Where, I'm not saying all these improvements may be done, but you can see all the traffic improvements.
You're not, heading west is, is on the top of the screen, heading west.
Yep, heading west, yep.
They have a dedicated turn lane going into town.
Yep, there's a dedicated turn lane coming in, this is a convenience store that we don't get.
Look how long that is, that one, that one is going in my house, not even worth of that.
Look at the turning radius, I think this is a transition lane here, uh, that, that looks like maybe...
That's brown, we're talking about, see what turning?
No, just like, it's possible, it's hard to detect, but you see, there's a dedicated right turn lane here, so I envision...
That's, I don't know how many 20, but I don't even know what you're talking about, that. So see that semi, look at this picture. See that semi, when he leaves that, when he leaves that road?
Yep.
He cannot stop in the middle there, he has to keep rolling.
Yeah, no, he does have to.
Okay, and if you're driving a semi, what, what lane would you get into? Would you get in the passing lane, would you get into the, into the sole lane?
That's the whole purpose of the traffic impact report, to review all those turning movements, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but the improvements may not all be done. I'm just showing you some of the improvements that were being done, but this is just...
I'm just, I'm just, I'm showing you guys right here the danger of this, this is kind of a pretty good example. That semi that is leaving there, say he's on that gravel road right there, he can't stop in the middle, so I mean, that, that is an uphill coming up to that, where my, where Pop Rabbit is. Okay, say it's a little foggy, or it's an uphill, and you didn't quite see who's coming, he can't stop in that middle. Once he makes that move off that gravel road, he's gotta keep rolling, because the traffic coming the other way will hit the back of his semi.
Yep, there may, there may be the need for an acceleration lane, I don't know, I mean, I'm...
So we're gonna, the DOT's gonna start acceleration lanes?
Excuse me, I didn't mean to, I'm just, I'm looking at your, your photo, is that an old photo? Because I just pulled up on Google Maps what that intersection looks like right now, and, uh, I didn't know if I was gonna can get that on there. When you're talking about that turn lane going into the one store, that's actually the hotel on the one side, yeah.
I'm not for sure, alls I know is there's a gas station down the road.
Who tells him that?
There's a hotel on the left, gas station on the right, obviously, a state of construction there, and, you know, I'm just, like I said, just looking at the, the size, you know, when you're talking about that turn lane going in, that is kind of a small little turn lane going in there.
Yep.
Um, it's hard to visualize from this picture, I guess, and that's why I asked Alson if there's a chance she could pull it up on Google Maps or something to show that area.
But, uh, like you said, there's 10,000 people, that said 10,000 people are going by there now, what, when was that done?
2018, I believe, that report.
So it's 2002, 2011 now, um, I, I, I go out there every morning, and you gotta wait a lot. A lot of times, like when I pull, I'm headed towards town, sometimes I just gotta pull in front of people. If there, there's a lot of people that they're in this one lane, they won't, they don't get over, I just pull off from them, and they couldn't try to get over. I mean, it's, even right now, it's a people lot, the traffic has gotten really heavy on that Highway 20, it's changed a lot.
Yeah, we're aware there's some major safety issues there.
Uh, can I?
I'm Jalen County engineer.
Okay.
Um, and that is why we're requiring to do a traffic impact statement. It just, it just got started last week, so we don't know if there is alternative, most likely.
So it has to be approved by the, the, does this have to be approved by the DOT before it goes in farther, or outside of?
Uh, kind of, um, it's outside of the DOT's jurisdiction, but the county will not sign up on anything unless the DOT's safety requirements are met. So, yes, it's required, we're gonna make it required. Okay, this is considered safe? No, DOT said they have major safety concerns, and that's why it's getting the traffic.
Sir, if, if you want, when Mr. Bates is in, I mean, please, please step up and, and say anything to ask questions, we really want to hear your input.
Okay, um, and another thing is, is, uh, is he doing this all by himself, or is there other people behind him? If he gets this rezoned, can he sell it off in any time? What, the answers that I got is, is wants to get zoned, it's up for anybody, he can sell to anybody for, say he wants to sell to Casey or something, they can do it, wants to rezone, he, he's not locked into having to do it himself, I mean, that's, that's what I kinda heard, so I, I don't know if that's real, or...
The site plan is binding, so the site plan will, will go with that rezoning, so if the rezoning gets approved, that's what's gonna have to construct, uh, into substantial conformity with that. Like I said, there's a change in use, we're back to square one.
What about owner, not use, but ownership?
Ownership, no.
So ownership, he could, he got that rezoned, goes to Casey and say, hey, I got a place that's rezoned for a...
That's a private matter.
But, but I mean, I know it's a private matter, but it can be done, right?
Of course it can, yeah.
Okay, so I'm just saying, he isn't locked into it himself.
No, just he said he could sell it, he could sell the approval, that happens, yeah.
Okay, I have just something to think about, just... Alright, well, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I would love to hear your questions.
I'm Dan Teske, I live right across the road, the interstate from where his plan is. And I stood in front of this board about 15 years ago, when I wanted to build a house, and they made it very clear to me, I had a rezoning property, I had also, and they made it very clear to me at that point in time that we're only gonna allow you to build one house here, but I'm gonna allow you to build a multiple. Now here we are, rezoned for commercial, I just wonder what changed in 15 years, I don't, I don't know what, is it a money thing? I mean, all these approval people he's got stand to gain financial from, which is fine, but I don't know about what changed. And back to the, the spot over by Sioux City, is that, is that considered safe, like this? Just, just 'cause some, you do something, it means right. Is that considered safe by you guys? I guess I don't, that's my question.
Yeah, that's a great question, I've been through that intersection a few times, and, um, I mean, there's a lot of traffic through there too, on, at that Holstein. I, I try to do it safely, I hope everyone else does, but, you know, it is a question, it's, it's, the intersection is, is setting certain standards, I'm sure, but it's just as safe as, as the people that are behind the wheel, I, I guess, which would be my way to answer that.
And my reserve too, is, you know, to beautify this, this spot, like Tracy said, go, go right down by Dollar, that's a shithole. I mean, it's terrible for a state park, for outsiders to come through and see that before. And what, what stops them from doing here? It's definitely a concern. And even with the lights at a, at a low candle, it's, oh, areas, well, they live in those areas. How do you get compensated for loss of value on your home, when something like that comes in? Well, there's a lot of guys that stand to profit from it, and none of the neighbors do, because I think that's very neighborly.
Well, to answer your question about what's changed, nothing has changed. The, uh, point being that this, if we did, this thing would have to be rezoned, and then that's when things change. Which sits right now, to answer your question, nothing has changed from 15 years ago to now, okay? The only thing that is always in motion is the development of our society, and different wants and needs, and things like that. And that we have to factor into degree of flexibility, okay? But to answer your question, again, nothing has changed from when you went to Forest 4 and now, okay? Now, I understand what you're asking, so I'm trying to answer it, did I answer good for you? No, rat.
That's true.
Well, I, I tried, okay.
I got a letter from Phyllis State, I mean, I hope you can go to my phone ahead, how you're talking, yep. So I was speaking, we have Phyllis Stewart and myself, Justin Patterson, I live just straight north of that, and I guess a little to the left. My concern is, what, if they drill a well, that's gonna drop our water levels in our wells. All the trash, a fence ain't gonna stop paper from flying, all the, what's it, the ETV park, all the four-wheelers and motorcycles running up and down the trails, running down railroads, entering Phyllis's land without permission, that's right off of the county road, Holiday Creek Park. All the people that get left at truck stops, rest stops, where do they go? They wander to our houses, um, they wanna build a dog park. I think it's 40 acres that separate us, how long is that gonna take a dog to run over there and bite my little kid, and sit outside playing? There's lots of dangers, um, people coming in robbing the place, we got open highway to take off, run over to our place, crazy place, all these people in places, and then runoff. You're gonna be septic tanks, bleach beds, lagoons, just, I guess just filth is the biggest thing in the truck traffic, and people are gonna find easier ways to eat at Fort Dodge and run 100 mile an hour around the corners by our houses, everything else. I mean, there's just a lot of danger, especially the intersections. So, and Phyllis had property taxes, what's it gonna do to our property taxes? She's lived there for 60 something years, and, I mean, she knows her work, she can't afford to raise her property taxes thousands of dollars a year. And then what does it do to the value of our homes? If property taxes go up, the values go down, who wants to live next to a truck stop? You wanna live next to a truck stop? I see you rolling your eyes.
No, I just didn't understand, you said your property taxes go up when your values go down.
Yeah, who's gonna wanna buy my house, for what I just bought it for, in a truck stop 30 acres away?
I thought when your values went down, your taxes went down, is what I was thinking.
Yeah, do you, you wanna live next to a truck stop? Same, like you said, you're rolling your eyes.
I just didn't understand your comment, was what my, if you mean, I just explained that.
If you want to build a truck stop, why don't you go next to your own house? Because you don't want a truck stop next to this house. So I just have a lot of problems, I just dumped my life savings to an acre over there, remodel the whole thing. I'm not gonna live next to a truck stop, and I'm gonna move, see if that thing gets built, but that's... My, my wife's family, everyone who grew up out there, right along with Tracy's kids, you don't wanna live next to a truck stop, this grand, this dumb old girl live next to a truck stop? It's absolutely ridiculous, it's a city, and when you're a truck stop, what, 10 miles, 14 miles, to up the city, another, maybe 13 or 14 miles to Fort Dodge, you just bought four truck stops there, then you go and get diesel and fuel and everything else that brings just as much money to Webster County.
Did you have those letters, did you wanna make those part of the record?
Yeah, if you could.
Can you give us the...
Tell us, and they will make it in, I know she talked to you plenty of times about it.
Yeah, she talked to me.
So...
And that's Phyllis Stewart?
Yes, and her land butt dried up, basically next to the counties and this, so, and that's all I got to say.
Alright, thank you.
So again, this property does not butt, this property, there's substantial buffers in place, which again will mitigate any adverse effects, so again, that's why staff are supporting this report.
Hi, I'm Christine Amal, I actually own the property just south of the outlined area. Um, we actually just bought the sacred age October of last year, never would have bought it had I known that there was a proposed. I don't care if you call it a convenience store or a truck stop, I don't care what you call it. I left Fort Dodge because I didn't want that. Yes, Highway 20 is there, it was an adjustment for me, to learn, to get used to that noise. However, plenty of other neighbors, my neighbors, I haven't even met most of these people yet, because I don't have time. Um, we don't want that, we don't want the traffic, we don't want the trash, we don't want the criminal activity, which we all know is going to happen, and the accidents, it's going to happen. If you have semis, cars, teenagers, whatever, on Highway 20 trying to turn in there, or turn out of there, especially in January, how many of you guys have driven up that hill, down that hill, and tried to pull across that? My fiance does every morning, when he goes to work, because he works out of Carillon. There's plenty of other places, I grew up in transportation, my dad owned his own trucking company, I get it, I have the utmost respect for 90% of truckers, that 10% as well, I don't want anywhere near my family.
Okay, I have to ask, can I, where did you say you live?
That house, um, 111040110, whatever it is.
That's actually 500 feet from the, from the proposed property.
Yeah, you're, uh, you got the fenced in front yard or the yard?
Yes, certainly.
I stopped there twice, uh, trying to talk with you, to give your opinion on this.
Yes, I, well, that's, we both work two jobs.
I hope you're, uh, when I knocked on the door, that your dogs didn't go totally nuts and take the wallpaper off, I mean, you know.
No, you know, they sound ferocious, they're not, they're...
Well, I wasn't spared, it's just that I gave my, I just wanted you to know that I...
Yeah, I appreciate that, um, I had to step out, I had to answer a work call, and when I came back in, Shane informed me that there had been, four mailings had gone out, or emails, I received one.
Yeah, so that's for this meeting?
Okay, but we've received nothing about this proposed rezoning, anything like that, until one of our neighbors down the hill brought it up to Shane, on three weeks ago, about, um. I'm all for progress, what, what about this area needs to be beautified? Except, I mean, I want somebody to answer that for me, because when I get up in the morning, and I can walk out my front door and see the sun coming up, and there's fields, and in the summer, it, yeah, it's beautiful. In the winter, not that in Iowa it's pretty, come on. There is a nature area there, how long do you think that's gonna last if you've got a convenience store and the traffic, the wildlife that lives out there, before it's gone?
Well, another question I have is, you said you moved out of Fort Dodge?
Mm-hmm.
Well, the noise off of that highway?
Mm-hmm, it's not the noise.
It's, it's noise to me, my goodness.
It took me about three days.
Really?
To get used to it, yes.
I think it took me longer than that.
You know, but it's, I don't want to live in town, I don't want any part of living close to town. Having a convenience store across the highway from me is too much being in town for me.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Craig Stewart, I live about three quarters of my own straight north, Camp Pinocchio, right on Holiday Creek and stuff, is part of my property. You move out there, I've lived my whole life out in that general vicinity. My parents had lived their whole lives before they passed away, 80 some years, and that, that they lived. And you move out to that area to get away from that stuff. That highway is three quarters mile from my house, and there's still a lot of noise and stuff from that highway damage. People from Cobble, which is two miles away, they hit the rumble strips on the side, and it shakes and stuff out there where you're at with that. How much are you gonna do when it's that much closer and stuff? And then the Jake breaks, and everything else that come through, it's just noise. Most people that are out in that area grew up in an agricultural area, they also come in there, and if it's a house for an acreage, they're moving out to get away from all of that stuff. And they said, yes, it's 40 acre buffer between you and, like Tracy, and Justin, and them out there, but 40 acres is nothing out in that country, when you're used to the open space. They don't move out to have something in their backyard first, and that's my concern, plus the safety. And there's other things brought up that, you know, what about the waste and stuff that comes out of those places? Are they gonna be like, there's no sewers, are they gonna have like pits for like the cattle and the hogs that they gotta pump out and haul out of there and come down our ground? and haul out of there and come down our ground roads? Lot of concerns besides what was brought up, but just concerned that we move out there to get away from all of that and not have it be moving out to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to make any comments?
I just have a couple of quick questions that maybe Jamie or Jeff might be able to answer. My name's Angie Chulisky, I live just, uh, just to the west of Daniel Wendy down in Kildare. You just see my beautiful twenty acres on the south side of Trinity Street.
I didn't catch, I didn't catch your name.
Oh, Angie Chulisky.
Angie?
Yeah, so, um, my first question is if, are you kind of putting the cart before the horse here if you're rezoning prior to a traffic study being done to determine if that's safe? Wouldn't you wanna find out if that's even okay before you say, yeah, go ahead, let's rezone it, you're gonna build whatever you want? Or essentially, I know there's site plan, but, I mean, I guess I would think that maybe that would be a requirement that needs to be done first. Determine whether it's safe, determine how much money it might cost this gentleman to make those improvements before you say, yeah, go ahead and rezone it. Because to me, if, if you rezone it and then it's deemed not safe for what he's planning to do, but now it's rezone commercial, could he come back with another site plan, propose something else?
It's a good question, I wouldn't use the word not safe. I would probably transportation is gonna require those improvements to make it safe and yeah, that's the purpose of the whole traffic study.
Okay, okay. But wouldn't, wouldn't that need to be done prior to?
Not necessarily, no, straight rezoning, well, in this case, we have a site plan that's tied to this zoning. And so we're requesting that be done upfront, we know exactly the use that's gonna go in. When we do a, when we do a straight rezoning, we can allow a number of uses. When you, when you do a traffic study, the traffic counts are different for each type of use. And so that factors under your report.
Right, okay.
And so we know, we know exactly what we got now. And Mr. Stump is taking this to the traffic consultant to prepare the report just based on this impact only. Could there be additional impacts, like a hotel? But yeah, then we'd have to revise that traffic impact report, look at the improvements again that are out there.
So when does it end? I guess that's my point. You're asking, I believe you said it's about eight acres is your site plan? But you're asking for twenty some acres to be resoned, so what's gonna happen to the other?
So I wanna clarify, yeah, I wanna clarify that, when you see, when you see the red outline of the property, you have two parcels. And, and the, the corner parcel is eight acres, like you said, but the developed portion of that is four acres, that's eight acres.
Okay.
Just so you know, and the rest, the remain, the remaining balance of that is four acres.
But that means it's rezone commercial, so he can come back in and say a couple of years and say, well, I have this beautiful truck stop, or what, whatever we're calling it, and now I wanna put a hotel. It's because it's already been rezoned, all he needs to do is submit another site plan, is that correct?
So it's a valid point, and this is what we have in front of him, and I've, and I've talked this over with the partner, the chairperson this morning. What the board's gonna go ahead and formulate a recommendation, my recommendation would be to rezone just the developed portion here, which is approximately three to four acres, which would be, need to be legally defined. So that if he comes back down the road and wants to propose another commercial use next to this, to the west or to the north, he'd have to ask for the rezoning and submit another site plan of what he wants to put in, whether it be a hotel or a truck stop.
So we're not asking for twenty some acres to be rezoned.
We are, so said we are, but I believe, but probably gonna come out of this and it comes, my, my, my recommendation that they're gonna move forward, the recommendation is just to rezone the developed portion, which is approximately four acres at the corner.
I guess maybe I'm just, maybe I'm a little confused.
Well, you're, you're correct.
That's what I'm reading.
You're correct, he's requesting to rezone twenty, twenty eight acres.
But you're only recommending four, give or take sixteen.
That needs to be, that needs to be discussed, yeah, that, that needs to be discussed, so, yeah.
And Angie, it's Derek Rusk of Webster County Attorney. Just I wanted to clarify your first point, and it's well taken, I think. Whether or not before this board would consider a rezoning of this section, whether or not we should know what we've got in terms of at least having the traffic study.
Okay.
So I, I just wonder, are you suggesting this board should table this issue until the traffic study is done?
Yes, yes, I am.
As a citizen?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify and listen what you're.
I mean, among many other reasons that I believe people have brought to light, I think that should be probably a matter.
I understand, I understand.
Specifically in the traffic study, though, you think that should be required before this board has information?
I do, yes.
As a citizen, I just wanted to clarify that issue, because I thought it was the unique issue that's been raised.
Maybe that's why.
Part well taken, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Do we have any more?
Just wait for, yeah.
One more question, please. My fiance just asked, so what will happen to our property values? If this convenience store, truck stop, whatever it is? I sunk my life savings into it, to a home that I've owned for less than a year, this young guy just sunk his life savings into it. What's gonna happen to that?
I mean, I don't wanna answer that, but you rarely see property, you rarely see property values go down, but go ahead.
Do you wanna buy my home then? If this happens, would you like to spend a quarter of a million dollars to buy my home? Because that's what I just spent six months ago.
Well, ma'am.
That's, that's what I'm asking.
That's valid concern.
It's a, it's a valid concern, but, go ahead.
The, uh, I can't firmly address your question, but I can give you this insight that your values of your property probably won't be affected that much when it comes to this proposal. What happens is that with, with this proposal, it will start to limit the number of people that would be willing to buy your place if it was, if it wasn't there as compared to if it is there.
Okay.
That part, that part I'm sure, all right?
So then it lose market, it, it doesn't have as much market value, correct?
It doesn't have this big of an audience that would want to look at your place.
Which increases value, the more people.
I, well, see, you're, I, I'm not.
I mean, that's what I'm.
I'm not going, I'm not going there on that foggy side.
It decreases more, for real.
I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna tell you what, I'm with Tony's gonna manage the purchase that happened in the built home, so.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, just the, the traffic impacts, the noise that's generated.
Okay, when, when we purchased our home?
Yeah.
Highway twenty?
Yeah.
Was a benefit to us because we ride motorcycles. We wanted to be on a hard surface road, we wanted to be able to get where we wanna go. He works at cario, I work for the radio stations in Fort Dodge, so that was very important to us. So that was a selling point for us. A convenience store across the road, I don't care if it's Highway twenty, if it's Poplar Avenue, I don't care if it's South Twenty Second Street in Fort Dodge, is not going to increase the number of people that want to buy my home or Scotty's house, or Angie's house, anybody's house that lives there. If that is not going to increase the number of people that would buy my home to be somewhere they want to live, that makes it less desirable. The value of my home does not go up if there's nobody that wants to live there. Thank you.
Was there anyone else?
I just did.
Did you have any other comments?
I know we've been talking a lot about traffic and traffic safety, and we've been talking a lot about the traffic impact studies. First of all, I'd address the safety part. I don't want this, I'm not gonna do it if it's not gonna be safe. I'm gonna talk to Holstein, their site is very comparable to mine, and they had some issues when they first started and with the turning lanes, so they put in long turning lanes in them, they put a decelerating lane in, and they put in a accelerating lane there. And I thought they said they haven't had any problems. That's what's gonna have to be done at this intersection, we're gonna have to put in longer turning lanes. And now they got newer turn lanes like it's a L shape, that you get them away from the traffic. We're gonna need an accelerating lane, so there is gonna be a lot of improvements gonna be, be done at this intersection. If you had a map here to go to the right to Dunkum, it's Union Avenue, to go up to Dunkum, the city of Dunkum, and you know, south it goes to Brush Creek, same traffic count. We got Van Dees semis, we got new cool up semis. We got all them people doing the same thing that we're gonna do right here. And is it safe or not? I don't know, is it safe when they get off feet over on the four lane way to B fifty-nine with the curve, Jorsen curve? Is that safe? We try to get as good as safe we can, and that's our number one goal, is safety. But you still gotta pay attention. And I'm personally brought up about you can't get in that median, I have semis, you don't want semis staged in that semi, in that median. I got long semis, you can't tell the back if you're back and you're hanging over the other side. So is that good or bad that we don't have semi staged there? I don't want that. And it's closer than when you pull up Poplar Avenue, you're, you don't have room to stage, you can see then, once you do pull out, you're gonna be quicker to get across to head to the east. So that's my point about the, my intersection compared to other intersections, same traffic count, that they're going up to Dunkum, they're going down to Brush Creek, going to Lehigh, and same thing, crossing the traffic, and yes, you may have to wait for, I don't know, fifteen, twenty seconds, but that is the part of four lane twenty, that's how they built that. Otherwise, they would've taken all these upgraded intersections out and made it an interstate. But the farmers and everybody around them did not want that, so the state, that's what they put in, so. And there's other four lanes of upgraded intersections through the state too, the same example as me. Okay, back up to the, then the traffic impact study, she, she had a good point, says, why don't you do the traffic impact study and why don't you get all that done first? But that's gonna cost me a lot of money, the fifteen or whatever, twenty thousand dollars. I could do the traffic impact study and I can make it all safe. Okay, I do all that, and I come to the board, just like you or somebody else, they don't want me doing it. So that's what I'm getting to right now. If I have that safe tra, safe intersection then, I know that's our number one goal, it's safe, and if I have that, and that's why I said I can't get my building permit until I get this traffic impacted, so I cannot do anything on that site until I get that traffic impacted. So when I get that done, and then we're gonna go, then I can get my building permit and I can build. But right now, where I'm sitting, you want the traffic impact study, so I do all that, then maybe everybody in this room does not want me to build there, so. That's what I'm finding out tonight.
As you say, that's what I, that impact study is fifteen to twenty thousand.
Because this, this is not a normal, I don't know, the four lane twenty or something, it's not like B fifty-nine or something like that. It's a minimum of ten.
Well, B fifty-nine is county, they're paid too much anyway.
So that's what I wanna figure out tonight, I get the intersection statement, we, it's given, there's gonna have to be turning lanes in. The site Jeff had up with Holstein, that was way before I think even done, when they put the four lane road in, they did not have that intersection perfect. So after they even did the four lane road, they came back and redid the intersection again, made top longer turn lanes, and then they put in accelerated.
Thank you again.
All right. Please step up and state your name.
My name is Shane Pivoker, I live right across the way. You know, there's been several mentions of Holstein, I just brought up the Union Avenue. And, I mean, it's kind of comparing apples and oranges, Union Avenue is flat ground. You're not dealing with that hill. I come out of my place, come down Poplar Avenue, cross and head west down twenty. I've had a vehicle that was running one headlight about to fly me because I didn't see him at six o'clock in the morning. I, you know, I mean, this, this is kind of a specific intersection compared to Union Avenue, compared to Holstein. Holstein, that area in that photo looked a lot flatter than the ground to the west of, yeah, to the west of there. And that's just, you know, just for starters. And as far as like Angie's point with the completing the traffic study versus, and you're talking about building permits. You know, this meeting tonight is about zoning primarily, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so, is it, is it a situation where it could be zone pending? And he's looking for approval to move forward with his study? I, I mean, I get that, you don't wanna throw money out and then not have it approved. But if it, if it's got to be that way, why, you know, I don't, I guess I don't understand entirely why it has to be zoned first, other than he doesn't wanna put money out. I think the request to have it tabled and look into this a little farther, obviously, is a good idea. Many of the people here would agree with that. It definitely needs a lot more study, I guess, I don't know what the right word for it would be. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You just look like you wanna say something as a person.
My name is Ray Kirsten, I'm working on behalf of Kurt and Kevin Stump on this matter. What I would like the board to consider is Jeff Johnson's analysis of what the requirements are to do a rezone. I think Jeff has done a thorough job evaluating all the points. And from the moment I've met with Kurt and Kevin back in January, safety at that intersection has been the preeminent concern. Kevin reached out to DOT in January, has had numerous contacts with them, have been used to that with Mr. Joel, and they've had meetings. And there's no question that there will have to be significant changes at that intersection to make it safe. And if this board grants the request for the rezone, under the conditions that are, that have been recommended and which are agreed to by the applicant, there wouldn't be any build a permit issue, nothing would be done until that traffic study is completed. It's completed to the satisfaction of DOT, which in turn will require Mr. Joel at the county to sign off on it. I don't think it's, it's fair to make Mr. Stump advance those funds with no assurance that he'll see or return on. Now, maybe the, the traffic study plan will show that the costs to make that intersection safe are prohibitive and the project will grow. We don't know, but we'd like to have the opportunity to make it make a run of it and see if we can work. So that's what I wanted to add on that, because I asked the points that the, that the board ordinance requires will the board to consider and that addressed by Mr. Johnson, and I believe that the applicant has satisfied.
Thank you, Mr. Kirsten. Okay, if we have any more public comments, if not, we will close public comments and board will start our discussion of the issue. Okay, board, I, I wanna clarify something real quick first, because it's not a piece that's thrown around. This site says, the site plan says eight point eight acres property size, and you keep saying four acres, yeah. What are we talking about?
So this plan, do you wanna put the site plan up again, Allison? This drawing is not depicting the full eight point eight acres, it's probably depicting half of that. I don't know, we don't have a survey in front of me, but I can tell you that. You take a look at this development and you go back to the air photo, and you see those two parcels, that's the eight point eight acre portion that's right at that northwest corner. But, yeah, this, this developed area is not eight acres. This, the land next to it with the developed area, we don't know where that property land falls. We don't know, so. He's, this is just a site plan, I'm just, yeah, yeah, we don't have the full.
We didn't require that.
I didn't require, you know, to show those parcels. We're not down to all the nitty gritty detail yet.
Well, I, I mean, that is kind of the nitty gritty detail to me when we're looking at asking for twenty four acres on the retail. So that's.
Sure, I, I mean, just by visualizing this, this is about half of that eight point eight acres that's, that he's proposing.
I want you to, please, please explain to me how this is not spot so.
It's based on the characteristics that currently exist. We have full access, we have a property that fronts a major arterial, the sort of highest vehicle trip, vehicular trips in the county that lend itself to commercial. So it, it does lend itself to commercial based on those types of characteristics.
Just because of the roadway and the car?
Exactly, absolutely, I mean, I mean, I, I feel sorry for those people that have single family homes that are but all that traffic. It's only gonna get worse, the traffic counts are only gonna get worse along twenty over time. I mean, there were sixty-five hundred a decade ago, now there are ten thousand. I could see that easily up to fifteen thousand here in the next five to ten years, you know, and they want a interstate promise or everything else for the cost there. So. So, yes, so definitely, those properties along that twenty frontage, that's the highest and best use, especially when they're at intersections.
I guess I see it as spot zoning because we have commercial zoning over at the other intersection to the west. And when I look at our, our map, and I see that commercial zoning over there, which is where something like this should be, and then I see, you know, the, the agricultural preservation, and then we'll be asked to flatten the little commercials all over here. To me, when you're looking at a map like that, that looks like spot zoning.
Well, in fact, that, in the comprehensive plan, this is in the clump. If this was outside the clump, then you'd probably have an argument that this, a possible argument that this is spot zoning. But spot zoning is not prohibited in the code. It's defined, but you look, you read the referrals in the code, it doesn't mention that spot zoning is prohibited. Yeah, you wanna take a look at every case to see if it actually does warrant that commercial designation and zoning designation on property. And the characteristics of this site warrant that. So a lot of properties throughout the country, if they front major arterials, they're either industrial or commercial. Yeah, you'll see residential being built, but typically you'll have a buffer before you get back to residential. Or in some odd cases, you might have some multifamily right up against major arterial. There's a lot of negative impacts associated with Highway twenty and to have single field. It definitely doesn't warrant itself for a single-family subdivision. To me, that'd be like spot zoning if you wanna put a single-family subdivision right up against Highway twenty, you know, so I mean, you know.
Okay. I, I guess, you know, in my limited experience here, and everything I've learned on this, this, I'm sorry, I just looked.
I mean, are, are there better sites for this throughout the coun- throughout the county? Better intersections with better access? Yeah, but this is what we have in front of us tonight. So, you know.
I've got a whole list, so I don't know. About me to just finish my list here real quick, I'm gonna.
Knock yourself out.
Knock myself out. All right. These, these are my questions. I absolutely would like to see a traffic report or, or I wanna see some plans from the DOT. I, I, you know, I agree with Ian G. I don't like the idea of rezoning this without seeing. And the reason is that in, in this section of our, of our comprehensive plan, when you get back here and you talk about transportation plan and how that affects what we do with our zoning, my concern is, how is that going to affect the rest of the area? Do we need to sit down and look at that? It's, it's, you know, we're, you know, this gentleman's coming in and asking for this one little spot, but that's gonna affect the whole area. And, and I just wanna say, I, I love the idea of, of a travel site. I absolutely love it. I've been advocating for that for a really long time. I think that's something we need in Western County. I, I, I'm questioning this, this particular location. I think we have some better locations. I think you're right to say that with all the amenities in the area, with the, the, you know, Oriole Park and with the, you know, Campinoki and that, I think it would be great to have something like that. I'm actually willing to come here and see it at the next intersection now and give the, the, you know, people of Polville an opportunity. I just see so much opportunity there that I maybe don't see in this particular spot. But I love the idea of the travel center. I've been to the one at Holstein numerous times, and you're right, it's, it's very nice. I, I think that's something that we need. So that's what I have to look at, I guess, is I have to look at if we're gonna have a big, major intersection there, that kinda makes a big change to our transportation maps. And should we make adjustments to anything else in our comprehensive plan because of that? So that's why I think I would like to see that, you know, I would like to see that first, and we, we have some citizens that would like to see that first. I'm, I'm also kind of curious, you're, you're asking for the changing, we should change the comprehensive plan first, correct?
No, those, those who go hand and glove through the whole process, the rezoning, the comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use for agricultural and commercial, to make sure it's consistent with the proposed commercial general. So it does not require the planning, you know, the planning and zoning, we need to know that that's going on. It doesn't require that comprehensive plan amendment to go through the planning and zoning. It does require the board supervisors to review that and take final action on that. So it's just, it's just a cleanup.
Have you had any comments from the, from the board of supervisors on what exactly they want to change? Are they just planning on changing one little spot?
They, they're saying what, what we have right in front of us here now, and what his proposal is. The supervisors are aware that Mr. Stump did submit this request, and they have this as public record. So our, my conversations with the supervisors have been his plans and obviously the zoning of this piece.
And you think it's kind of a piece peeling out of our comprehensive plan and chopping it up into little pieces when we're trying to keep a cohesive look about it? And the fact that we're jumping from current land use, current, current land use maps, we're completely bypassing the future land use map, and we're going right to the clump map, which to me, I view, this is my own personal opinion, that I view the clump map as the, the big overview of what we would like to see in the county. That's why there's only three tiers to it. And you have the future land use map, and I believe there are eleven tiers to the future land use map. And on the future land use map, this property is still, I believe, at preservation? I, I just, I, I'm concerned about it looking like a little small. I'm concerned about this spot. Like I said, I love the idea of a travel site. I love that plan. I just, I don't care for this spot.
No matter the term, the, the problem with the, this proposal, the way I see it, is that the comp plan comes first, then comes the zoning. Unfortunately, the supervisors in this county have demonstrated their willingness to throw that out the window. Case in point, that they, we denied the rezoning that down South Garry. They took our proposal, threw it out the window, and then said, we'll change the comp plan the way we want to, just so we can rezon it. And that doesn't sit well with me either. And I think it is spot zoning. And just for the rest of you to understand, the zoning board, us here, we only make a recommendation to the supervisors. They can take it and they can like it, or they can override it and do what they want to. And so we have to be very careful what we send to the supervisors. Because if we table it, that gives us all breathing room. But if we approve it or deny it, it goes to the supervisors, and then they have the final say. And the way it sounds right now, I get the feeling that there's a lot of people in the right political areas that would approve this at a moment's notice. And I don't cotton with that. Amen. Amen.
One of, one of my other notes here, and I will, may I have a sticky note? You know, in, in reading in your proposal, Jeff, you talk about the increase in traffic. The way it is increased on four lane, and your just recent comments talk about the increase in traffic. That's a real concern at, for me, at an intersection like this. I have absolutely no concern about it where there is an off ramp, an on ramp. That's why the U P puts them in, I'm sure.
They're safer, they're safer, there's no question about it.
Yeah, they're absolutely safer. And my concern is for, you know, if, if this is the trajectory of our traffic, it's just going to get more unsafe. And for any of these folks that are living there, you know, what does that do to them? That doesn't, you know, I, we, we've talked a little bit about this. And in my opinion, one accident is one accident too many. One death is absolutely one death too many. So I want to see safety. I wanna see what their plan is, if they're talking about acceleration lanes. I mean, you know, how much real safety that all we take up? And so, and, and I know, you know, as far as changing, changing our, our plans, like I said, I look at that clump plan and I, I see it as the, the big picture. And we don't have that much development back in there, that, that big picture takes you out to that edge. A lot of, a lot of the people in Western County, when we had our meetings for our comprehensive plan, one of their biggest issues was the preservation of agro. And my concern is, is if we start going outside that and doing development out there, is that gonna lend itself to further development out there on that?
Again, we're looking at someone that's fronting major arterial. We're not looking at something, at something that's removed from the major arterial, so.
Still major, it's still, still.
It lends itself, it lends itself to commercial. That's what I'm saying. It's a no-brainer. I'm gonna tell you, I mean, you know, planning principles, uses on major arterials are typically commercial.
I, I hear you talking.
I mean, we're talking rule of planning here, yeah, you have something that's, that's coming in here, that's definitely commercial in nature. And yeah, not so major arterial, there's improvements that have to be done. It has to, there's a lot of steps that need to be done, the traffic impact report. There's, once that's completed, they have to have plans drawn up. That, that takes quite a while, six to nine months. We just push, for Kevin Stump to start building out there in a perfect world, wouldn't be until next summer. So, you know, we're, we're a long ways off here. There's a lot of checks and balances that have to go through to the DOT, to Jamie's office, the county engineer. Not only the improvements on Highway twenty, but the improvements on Poplar, we wanna make sure are functioning appropriately with appropriate turn lanes and whatever required there as well. So there's a lot of hoops here. And Mr. Stump's aware of that, so.
I, I wanna, I, you know, it brought up by some of the folks in the audience, when you first started talking about the differences between a travel center and a truck stop, how this is being built as a travel center, but we don't want it to become a truck stop. How do you stop that from happening?
Well, there's a condition of.
First of all, first of all, what's the reasoning? What's, what's, I mean, I, I, from the old things that Mr. Stump said, it sounds like he wants it to be a, a, you know, very attractive, almost more family-friendly kind of, kind of place to stop. And, and I, you know, the, the truck stop, I'm not dispiriting the trucking industry. I, I mean, I won't do that. Those guys need to stop too.
Yeah. So the way this site plan is, is set up in some fashion here, is there's no designated parking for semi-truck tractors or trailers. If you go into a Love's Travel site, you're gonna see spots that are designated where you drive by one, they're backed into them, they're lined up forty, fifty in a row here. You're not gonna be able to line up. That's why there's a condition of approval that requires them to barricade off those impervious surfaces. So those trucks should stay on that impervious surface, get their gas, and get out of there. You're not gonna see very many places where they could actually park. And we're still fine-tuning that where they can park overnight. We don't, good or bad, he's, he's asking approval for a convenience store, restaurant with gasoline sales. We don't want trucks in there overnight parking for a truck stop. Unless, you know, we want him to go ahead and provide full-blown plans for a truck stop, and, you know, you're unhappy to do that, I'm sure, so.
If your, if your original, if your, if the original, you know, application is asking for twenty-four acres, that's kind of what would lead me to assume that there is a further plan down the road to maybe do that.
It could be a hotel. We don't know. I mean, so that's why, you know, if you've got, and then water, if you're gonna be forced to the requisition limit to that developed portion of the site, which is about half of that eight acres, that needs to still be, needs to be defined. And he's been working on that, you know.
So, so again, what happens if you, you, you say this is gonna be a travel center? We, we do a few acres, you come back later and you say, well, now we're gonna throw a truck stop in there. If there's a lot of public outcry, do we say no on a rezone? I mean, and that's Mr. President, you know.
Everything's reviewed under its own merits when it comes back in, and whether or not, yeah, it's all reviewed, goes through the whole process. So when I submit that rezoning, they require to submit a plan, whether it be a hotel, or truck stop, or whatever. So we go back to the public hearing process, which is good. We want public input.
Absolutely.
Process, yeah.
Absolutely. I think that was all my points. Oh, and I think as, as a board, I think we need to divide that vote on the vote change the comp plan and the vote for a rezone. And it takes up our time.
You've seen one, right?
I, I think it should be two different laws.
I agree.
But, but I, I personally, I'm, I'm not, I, I really wanna see this traffic study. I wanna see this traffic study. We have members of the public that wanna see this traffic study. And I think, you know, with a few board, I've been a lot of talking here, so jump right in.
So Kevin, you mentioned the traffic report, and did you order that up yet? If you don't, you can stand up and let us know, please. When do you anticipate that study to be done?
Well, I'm doing McClure Engineer. I mean, they, I've talked to the state, talked to the county, air vices, McClure, they're the most reputable, could do the best job. And so I went to them. I'm not going to somebody out of state that they say is gonna take a minimum of six weeks. He's hoping to get it done. I'm trying to get, you know, 'cause I'm fifty-five years old. I don't want, I'm, you know, I got a passion to do this. But I don't want that to happen, then get all this done, and then when you're seventy-five, you're afraid to start this. So I want, I'm trying to move it along as fast as I can, but I know it takes time. It's gonna take me a year, but. So I'm pushing him to get it done in the six weeks. So he says it's gonna be done, he's hoping in six weeks. But then it goes to the state, the I D O T, whatever. So on their turnaround, 'cause they have to look at it, then they're gonna decide, you know, what needs to be done or prove it if it's gonna work. So he's thinking it could be maybe another six weeks before they look at it, study it, think what their recommendation is. So he's thinking it's probably gonna be honest before that's done.
My question would be on the breakdown of costs on that. So I've heard three different costs, the start of the traffic, the traffic impact cost. And so I'm wondering what your estimated cost is, if there's two different costs associated with each of those six-week studies, how your total costs are looking at this? Because there's best proposal, obviously, to table this until we see the traffic impact study. Once again, it's gonna be enough for your cost for you, but I'm just wondering what the breakdown is in my first different numbers.
Well, when I, I came to say ten to fifteen thousand, when I first went to McClure and said, you know, this traffic impact study, he said it costs anywhere from ten thousand to a hundred thousand. Oh my God, it's a hundred thousand dollars. How can it cost a hundred thousand dollars? Well, he said, tonight you got the traffic and safety comments from the state aisle. And when that came back, it was pretty, I wouldn't say positive, negative, or however you wanna put it. He, with those comments, he said, well, now with those comments, it's not gonna be up in that hundred thousand. We didn't know if we're gonna need a, like an overpass or something like that. But according to those comments, when compared to the Holstein, compared to the Floyd, that's, so it's, I'm gonna need the turning lanes and all that. So now he's saying it's a minimum of ten, but probably around that fifteen. I mean, sometimes they tell you fifteen, but. So that's my, that's yes.
Can anyone think of any other spot on our four lane twenty that has something similar? Other than Holstein, I mean, Holstein, like the one that I'm planning out, is in a town. It was right there on the end of town, exit for Highway four, exit the, the last track. That's the track that with, with, you know.
And it's other majors.
Yeah.
Very south of Palmeroy. They got good fish there on Fridays.
There you go.
And I, I pulled in there and counted twelve semis with the windows blades off.
Yeah.
They got enough room for a horse and a pony.
But once again, they're running all flat roads.
Yes, absolutely.
And good on and off ramps and. But who's gonna pay for all of these armor and, armor and off ramps, overpasses, everything? If that's all out of his pocket, that won't cost county or state eighty dollars and raise our taxes?
That, that's my problem. That's not the county's problem, the state's problem. That's what I'm gonna figure out. Who's share is to pay what? I'm gonna have to pay part of it. I know that. How much?
Part of it.
Part of it. I, then maybe they're gonna make me pay for all of it. I don't know. But that's, that's my cost, and I'm gonna figure out how much is gonna be done. And then, I, I said, I feel like it's, in the long run, it's gonna, if I have to pay extra money for this, 'cause everybody says location, location, location. I know it's not an off ramp, but we got all these others that are on an off ramp too. This is part of four lane twenty. So I will be responsible with whatever my cost is. And if the county doesn't agree to it, the state doesn't agree to it, then I don't do it.
What's the purpose of those accesses like that? Because farmers are farming ground on both sides of twenty. And they gotta come across there. Otherwise, they would have to drive five, six miles with a tractor that goes fifteen mile an hour in a ton mine to come around and get it around into the other field. That's why when they ended up building twenty, they left those like that. And they put the off ramps every so often out of there. off-ramps every so often out of there, for more of the, you know, to keep it out of the agricultural part of the safety.
That's, that's kind of plays into my question, I'm trying to, in my head, kind of think of another site on four-lane twenty that had any sort of, uh, sort of a, a development like this. And, I'm, I'm kind of drawing a blank, so. If anyone else has any ideas on that. If there's any other on a, just a, whatever that type of exit would be called, any sort of development like this, most of them are all on developments where, where off-ramps, on-ramps are. And I'm just trying to think of someplace else that there was maybe something like this.
There's a Sinclair station around before you get to Dubu.
Is there?
Yeah, right on the crest of a hill, too.
Okay, okay.
Holstein is on the hill too, I, I went there and I studied their intersection. That hill is probably what, four, five hundred feet? So when you turn, when you're heading west and turn there, you don't have much time for judgment when the people are coming up. So they do it at, so they're not flat land either.
Yeah.
And you look at Canera, why, I don't know why we gotta look at just specifically development, we got, you know, Canera with new pull-up, that's the same thing, act great intersection. Look at the traffic that we get in the harvest during the end of the spring, they're crossing that traffic all the time. So why do we have to look at development, and why can't we look at just plain intersections where we got Canera, okay, let's say they're developing the new pull-up? Do we shut down new pull-up right now too, and say, "That's not safe"?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That hill isn't there, there's no hill in there.
No, but she's talking about development, next step.
No, you're, I, I guess I'm just trying to think of someplace that's gonna have that kind of a traffic hole. And when you talk about new cause, you're, you're absolutely right, new cause does generate the traffic hole. I'm assuming there were traffic studies done before they took those, those intersections in, and, uh, to be frank, some of those intersections during the harvest season don't work, where the semis get backed up, and they've got that, that intersection where you gotta come in, and you gotta hit that south sign and make that turn, um, you know, so, so some of those get pretty dangerous. Um, and, and I'm sure the pull-ups are aware of it, but I'm just guessing with their traffic study, the ideas before they put those in, that's maybe why they did it. But, um, I, I, that's, that's my perspective.
Elevator was there before the road, before twenty was built. And, at, Gary, how wide is the median? Does anybody know if a semi can sit in there and be off the road?
It's, it can get pretty, it can get pretty dangerous, because I'm thinking Canera, and then it's a.
Ax traffic, it was the same thing, how the traffic goes up the park, going to the left.
Yeah, yeah, the semis come up through there.
Crossing the traffic, like I'm saying, it's.
It's kind of expensive.
I think they'll have a twenty-foot trailer, be about taking up all the space, yeah.
And that's okay, because you don't really want them staging in the middle anyway. And if they stage in the middle, that's dangerous, you want, you wanna discourage that. So, you know, the design would most likely be not to stage there in the center, I would assume, and that they could go straight onto a, like a acceleration lane.
Well, I, I guess I, I, Board, if you have any other comments, I, I would like to, you know, out of request of, of a member from the public, to possibly table this issue until we, um, see a traffic study, see what, what the D O T is going to recommend. Just out of curiosity, Jamie, uh, major intersection changing, well, that over, what kind of a timeline is that, do you know? A six-month process?
Probably more than that.
More than that.
At least ten years.
Okay.
Millions of dollars.
Millions of dollars, okay.
Yeah, we won't know for sure, hold up, traffic, I have studies.
Are you, Madam Chairman, are you looking for a motion at this time, or you want more discussion?
Uh, more, that's up to you.
Gary, you got any thoughts?
No, I'll, I'll screen. Um, I wish the medium there was wider for semis. We, um, use the intersection a little farther east in the harvest time with semis, and it, it is, um, go back to our, is it our, what was the mapping, called the small map?
Pop map?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, let's bring that back. Sorry. Okay, so, let me ask you, if they were applying to build this on the east side of the road, that would be different, is that correct?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, this map is so small, and this is just taking my, trying to do my best to make this map, oh, Jeff, I'm pretty good there. So actually, he's on the west now, right?
Yeah, but is the line?
So here's pop, for example, this subject property, right, here's pop, right here, so, both sides are.
Okay, both sides are, okay.
Yeah, and so, I mean, getting back to discussion, I had the model here a little while ago, if it was outside the clump, then I think you might have an argument that, you know, or, you know.
Who, who made this map?
It's part of the comp plan, that's all. It's in the, it's in the comprehensive plan that was adopted back in two thousand eight, say.
It's my understanding that cities have kind of two-mile-off radius, but they have some six, is that correct?
Correct, they have what's called extraterritorial jurisdiction, and I know the city of Fort Dodge is working on some aspects of that. This will be removed from that, and, and, you know, although, so every city has an E T J, or extraterritorial jurisdiction, or they have some control over, and say, obviously it'll be developed. So, different criteria, regulating certain uses, plating, I've dealt with that in the past, and the reason works.
Okay, Ward, kind of something to add. Um, so, my concern lies more on the environmental side, being that this is a slope, and it does run to water, and there is potential for, for more development. I know there's a large culvert that goes out there, so I do have some concerns environmentally as far as future impacts, um, on, you know, I've got some of those zero erosion, runoff, garbage, all those things, what we've got to land.
Yeah, and, yeah, it's also very valid concern, so, they have to obtain what's called outside agency permits from the state, uh, and federal, and one of those will be the N P D E S permit, uh, National Pollution Discharge, regulate stormwater pollution, and they have to show, you know, all those impacts and how they're mitigated, and, and so forth. So, every use is different, and what they produce, and every development's different, and how much imperious they put down, how much they're off, and how that's contained, and how that can be impacting other properties in the area. So, there's, there's an actual permit that has to be, am I correct, Jamie?
Yeah.
So, just, knowing that we're gonna have, knowing that we're looking, you know, to continue this item, uh, we're probably looking at, at least a good two months, maybe, maybe three months, is that my recommendation would be, probably not to, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna hear this matter again, but just to re-advertise the meeting, and send out the same mail notices, is that what you kind of recommend, Darren?
Well, I don't, I don't necessarily presume, but in the event there's a motion to table this until such time as a D O T traffic study is filed with your office, at that point, if that's what the motion is going to be, and if that's approved by the court, yes, once you have received that, then you can, then do a new notification, you have to start the notification, the people within five hundred again, and start process over, basically, to get back to this.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause we're not, I don't wanna give them a specific date, you know, that it could possibly be continued behind.
Yeah, I, I would, I would suggest, uh, in the form of a motion, that that's what the board is inclined to do, to make the trigger for the next hearing upon filing of the report to your office, and then we can start. If you don't wanna, if you don't wanna republish, or continue the meeting two months, and they say, "Whoa, whoa, 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 let's take this file." I, I think that makes the most practical sense to me, what you wanna do, your board.
You're good at that, that's why you get the big bucks.
Uh, yes, sir.
You know, and Doug, I've, Doug and I have talked a little bit, this is something we can talk about, uh, as a board at a later time. I, you know, with your, with your comments on the four-lane and, and all that, that maybe we should look at making any developments along that four-lane, expand that notification circle, and, just because it does impact so many people, you know, and when you think about five hundred foot, you're basically in the state of Iowa.
And you, and you bring up a good point, so, I mean, we have a lot of people here tonight, which is great, you know, their public input is very much appreciated. If, by the end of the night, if you wanna fill your, if you're not within, there's only four properties that got notified within the five hundred foot radius. So if you wanna write your name and address on here, we'll make sure you do get notified by mail, next time we're on, I'll go ahead and leave this up here. Obviously, word does get out, which was good, you know, someone obviously contacted a lot of you guys to, to show off that we're outside the five hundred, so, but if you wanna get that mail notice, it would be more than happy if you had a mail notice.
Well, I think, you know, like I said, this kind of impact, I think, letting as many people know they're gonna be impacted by it, not just by, you know, having their property right next to it, but, you know, the folks that are saying they've gotta drive to work, and they've gotta go past that, and, you know, I always look for opportunities for our smaller, smaller towns, you know, if, if we could make something work that would, you know, benefit Polville, um, in, in, in our notification process, nobody in Polville would know, like. And, and just make it so close that, that, it's something we need to look at as a board, I guess.
Madam Chairman, may I make a motion then?
You absolutely can.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Driscoll's words, and all equipment in place, uh, I make the motion that we table this meeting, uh, with this proposal, um, and as I stressed before, it's important that you understand that tabling this is a good deal, because it gives everyone breathing time, and, uh, we need this impact study from the D O T, I think that is foremost. And if we was to deny it, or to approve it, then it goes right to the supervisors, and then they get to decide what they wanna do with, without your input. So this is, this is where the buck stops right now, okay? They're gonna understand that, very good. So, that's my motion.
Okay.
I'll second, but I wanna state publicly that, um, we're not saying no, but we're not saying yes.
Boy, that's good.
Yeah. There's a lot of things that, um, you know, will, we can, we're not saying it's doable, because, you know, it's in the ground here, so it, it is doable without a big, you know, re, resetting stuff, just, uh, we're not ready for it. So, I'll, I'll second it with that.
We have our motion, and we have our second, and we have a vote for the board, John?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
All right, I vote yes also, and we'll have a unanimous vote. And kind of echoing a little bit of what, uh, what Tony Gary said, um, the things we do here, we send on to the board supervisors. So the board supervisors, we have the final say. Um, we totally need our public input, and I, I really think what Mr. Stump is trying to propose is a good thing for, for the county. I, like I said, I've been an advocate for something like that for a really long time, I just, I, I hope we can maybe come, come to a, a good agreement that will work for the residents in the area and for Mr. Stump. So, with that, Board, I think that's all we have on our agenda. Do we have a vote for a chairman? And do we have a vote?
Yes.
Okay, Madam Supervisor, we are adjourned, thank you very much. You're very mean.
Thanks for telling us.